Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for showing up in this rather important special meeting for the City Council. We were kind of contemplating earlier today how many people might show up for this. I said we could have a lot, and other people said we could have very few. So I think we kind of compromised. Thank you. For the record, today is May 20, 2025. This is a City Council special meeting, and we'll start with a roll call, please.
Mayor Good.
Present.
Mayor Protem Kintomi.
Here.
Councilwoman Frith.
Here.
Councilman Montoya.
Still here.
Councilman Moore.
Here.
And Councilman Gambogi will arrive shortly.
Well, if you've read the agenda, we are here today to interview and ultimately vote on appointing a new member of the City Council. I'm going to be particularly strong in my expectation that we will have decorum in this meeting. I'm not going to tolerate any expressions of support or opposition for any of the candidates. Every candidate will have equal opportunity to present themselves, answer their questions, and then have the council be able to consider their answers. So if I hear expressions of support, clapping, booing, anything like that, you're going to be asked to leave this chamber. So this is particularly important when we're giving every one of these candidates an equal chance to make their case so we can select who will be the best candidate to represent the city. The process will be, we have a series of questions that we have decided on, and each candidate will receive the same questions. Our members of council will have the opportunity to ask a question, and then we'll rotate those questions in sequence so that each member of the council can have a direct opportunity to ask questions. We'll start off with, each candidate will have one minute for an opening statement, and then at the very end they'll have a minute to have a closing statement. And in the in-between, we'll have a series of six questions with one potential follow-up. So we will start with Patrick Grady, who is the first candidate. Come on up, Patrick.
Thank you.
So do you want to go ahead and make your opening statement?
Yes, thank you very much. So I really appreciate the honor of actually being a finalist for this particular position. And I hope through the interview process, you'll see both the experience that I've had and personal qualities that I've exhibited with you all in the past, and perhaps that we'll talk about today. Rather than focus on my resume in this one minute, I just want to highlight one of the things that I think is so important is, so what are the qualities that I bring to this potential position? And I think they are that I'm collaborative, I'm pragmatic, I'm nonpartisan, and I think I'm a consensus builder. And I think that my professional career, the success that I had there, some of the work that I've done with you all before this body, I think is a reflection of some of those values and how they've contributed to my ability to undertake a number of positive accomplishments in the different cities that I worked for.
Thank you, Patrick. We'll start off with Councilman Montoya. Go ahead and answer the first question, and we'll alter the second one.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Grady, the council is in the process of reviewing and potentially adopting the 2025 general plan for voter consideration at the 2025 general election. What is your position on the general plan and in its current form, and why?
So I have been involved in the general plan for over a couple of years and really appreciate the work that the general plan review committee has done during that time period. I know we're in the final stages of looking at that most recent draft, and another draft will come out this Thursday. And I think my biggest priority is to see the general plan make it on the ballot. So there has been feedback. In fact, my colleagues and I have been invited to sit down with city staff and talk about the climate and energy section, for example. And we actually made significant progress on deleting certain language, even a couple of specific strategies that might raise issues with some folks who have had some concerns about that particular element of the plan. And I'm hopeful that with the next draft that comes out this Thursday, that we'll see how that fared with city staff. And I'm hopeful that we'll get it to a point that there's been enough response to some citizen concerns that we can take it to the voters this fall.
Patrick, I recently heard Professor Alan Dershowitz say the problem with colleges today is they teach you what to think rather than how you think. And my corollary to that is, I think the one criteria for judging the candidacy of a city council member is that they evaluate each project on its own merits, not from some partisan perspective. So my question is primarily designed to evaluate how you think. And that question is, the council's in the process of considering options for the potential of widening 89. What is your position on the components of this project, and most importantly, why?
AZ 89, I was able to attend the work-study session by the consultants. And I think the focus on safety and traffic congestion was appropriate. And having worked with traffic engineers, you would have anticipated that. But I think there needs to be more focus on the iconic scenic byway, and whether or not there are actually any options, and how those options might enable the project to take into account the watershed itself. So I know that they'll be at the 15% design stage and present their findings in July. And I'm interested in not only hearing more about the roundabouts, hearing more about maybe even the Watson Lake roundabout, hearing more about, so what actual type of disturbance will be occurring with the rock, with the rocks and that particular look through the Narrows? And finally, one issue that I don't think came up at the level that I think it should, is the role of 89 in fire wildfire evacuation plans that we that we may have in place. There was conversation, obviously, about emergency vehicle access, but I'd be interested in hearing from the fire chief. I don't expect to hear from the traffic engineer on that. But so I'm analyzing that project from several different perspectives, and I'll be interested to hear where they are in July.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My question is, the question of whether or not to tap into the big chino has been a significant point of contention in recent years. So what is your current position on that issue, and why, once again?
Okay. Well, clearly, we know that we're not in safe yield. We know that water levels are dropping. We know that there's wells drying up. We know that the Del Rio Springs have dried up. We know that there are lower flow in the Upper Verde River. So that is clearly an option that needs significant input, not only from engineers, but public at large. So I'm hopeful that somehow we're going to be committing to doing an appropriate study, you know, based on fact, that will identify the costs, identify the pros and cons, identify the mitigating aspects of what that particular project might do to the Verde River as an example. But I think it probably might have to be part of the solution, but there's also a number of other potential solutions that I think can contribute. But I think we got to have to get started on that as soon as we can. Excuse me for My wife, who dressed me today, had some water. So yes, that's, you know, speaking to Councilmember Gambogi's point, I think I have a good mind that's very analytic in general. And I've looked at feasibility studies throughout my career, and I would take a very hard look at that. I'm not sure that's going to, where that's going to be on council priorities in the two-year period that this term encompasses.
Welcome, Patrick. I've got a quick question for you, too. The city is in the midst of its annual budget cycle. Given the most recent budget discussions, what priorities and changes would you be supportive of? What are your concerns related to the budget? And what parts of the five-year capital plan do you support or not support, and why?
I'm going to be honest that I have not reviewed the budget. I would point out that when, in my career as a department head in Phoenix and a deputy director in Columbus, Ohio for several years, I had a lot of experience with with city budgets, and even capital improvement budgets. And one of the things, of course, that I focused on more was, in my economic development arena, was more focused on the revenue side of things. But candidly, I have not reviewed the budget at this point.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Patrick, discussions regarding potential improvements at the Prescott rodeo grounds and events has been debated by the public and the council over the last few years. What do you feel is a reasonable solution to these issues? And how do you envision the community moving forward in a united manner related to the rodeo?
Well, I know that this city council has worked with the city manager's office to establish a steering committee. And I understand that that has representatives from the neighborhood as well. I think that's a good first step. I know that there's been a recent mass RFP out for rodeo fairgrounds master plan. But my concern, candidly, at this stage is, that plan focuses on design issues. And I think that one of the key issues that needs more of a feasibility study itself is if the if the events facility concept is is important to the rodeo, to the success, to more revenue generation, we're going to need a lot more information on that. And simply to do a design study and not know, so how large might that event center be, it's obviously going to have some negative impacts. But before you get off into this discussion, we need to see what is that proposal, what would those events look like, and what kind of space, what kind of traffic impacts? That would be my concern. I would point out that, by the way, I really value the rodeo. My wife and I used to come up here from the Phoenix area to the rodeo, even on our anniversary. And I value the element that it brings in terms of Western heritage. So my wife and I lived in Cave Creek for about eight years. We did a lot of horseback riding in in that community. There was, you know, a real Western culture. It was a former mining and ranching community. I was on the board of the Cave Creek Museum for several years. I collaborated with them and actually wrote two local history books. So I can identify with those that say this is so important to our community. I just say we need to take the appropriate steps to determine project feasibility.
Thank you, Patrick. The council recently adopted a five-year strategic plan. What parts of this plan are you aligned with and why? And how do you see this plan impacting the city moving forward?
I think in two or three areas, I have seen that strategic plan specifically as it relates to water management plan that I think is maybe on the city council schedule for for maybe in the next fiscal year, the fiscal year thereafter. I think that's really important. I applaud the city council for the 2024 water management policy that you put into place. I thought that was very forward-thinking and a good response to concerns about growth in our community and how we're going to manage that. So I think that that particular piece need to keep the pedal to that particular plan to make sure that it's implemented. Another area that's of particular interest to me, and my economic development background is the is the airport. I still think the airport is an undervalued and somewhat underutilized key driver for our economy. And I think that that was a priority for for you all in the strategic plan to attract more aviation-related businesses. And while I know city council members are supposed to have more oversight, I would just point out that in my role as Economic Development Director for the City of Phoenix, business attraction was one of our department's key responsibilities. And that one intrigues me a lot because I think working with Embry-Riddle and other partners, this is something needs to be done. And of course, you just recently adopted an economic development strategy. And in that strategy, they also highlighted the airport as as a key driver. And they came up in their 64-page document, they came up with a whole slew of strategies and actions that that could be taken. And I think the real key in moving forward is figuring out how do we organize ourselves as a community with our stakeholder partners to to try to move that initiative of business attraction and and securing more businesses and tenants for for the airport. We need that that strategic plan because there are just so many priorities contained in there. So those are the two that I'm most familiar with.
Well, we're at the point here where we've completed our series of questions, but I would like to offer this for you. Is there a question that you hoped would have been asked but weren't that you would like to discuss?
I don't think I've had that question in a long time. I think the question that I was thinking might be asked is, so what value do you, with either your education or your professional experience or your volunteer work here in Prescott, what value will you be bringing to this city and this city council?
So you're asking yourself that question?
Yeah, I guess I am.
How would you answer it?
Well, one of the areas of, I think, my potential impact via my expertise is, you know, looking at all of the elements that go into a city's growth. And so while I may have a heavy edge to my resume on economic development, I think it's important for you to know it's important for you to know that I was involved in other development-related issues that economic development brought me into, particularly when I was like the deputy director for economic development and planning in Columbus, Ohio for three years. So I was involved with historic preservation. I've been involved, again, with economic development, neighborhood revitalization, and, and downtown development. So I think the strength of my resume and my accomplishments will be a, a value. I also think the other value, which is somewhat related, is that I will be able to hit the ground running as, as a result of that experience. I recognize that I will have a steep learning curve as any candidate would. But I believe that the experience working with the mayor's office in both Phoenix and Columbus, as an example, working with individual city council members on a regular basis in, in both of those communities, I think, has prepared me to add, hopefully, somewhat immediate value.
Well, although that sounded like a closing statement. You are entitled to another minute if you'd like to add some additional thoughts on that closing statement.
Well, I would say that, as I indicated at the outset, it's been an honor to be a part of this interview process. My wife and I moved here eight years ago. We love this community. We love the streams, the mountains, the lakes. It's, we're really glad that we made that move and we've, we've found both a spiritual home and a grounding home, if you will. So we're both really interested in the future of this city. And I think, you know, being on council would give, you know, me an opportunity to contribute, contribute where I could. And I look forward potentially to that opportunity.
Thank you very much, Mr. Grady. I appreciate your candidacy.
Thank you.
So we'll move on to the next candidate. I am going to allow public statements, probably after all three candidates have been interviewed. And we're going to limit that to maybe five public statements per candidate. So rather than have people wait for an hour until the third one gets around and have that done after each candidate, we'll wait until all three candidates have been interviewed. And then if you'd like to submit a blue card to our deputy city clerk, then we'll allow you to make a few comments. Thanks. Okay, next up is Sherri Hannah. Sherri's up in the quiet room, so we're bringing her down. Well, we felt that that was appropriate, to have the candidates segregated so they didn't have an opportunity to hear the previous candidate's answers. And maybe been given some slight advantage by doing that. That way, everybody has an equal opportunity for consideration of their responses. We have a series of six questions. We're going to start off by giving you a minute to do a brief opening statement, and then the questions will be asked. And you'll have an opportunity for a minute for a closing statement over the next half hour.
Oh, okay.
So please proceed.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mayor and council. As everybody knows, my name is Sherri Hannah. I just want to thank you all for going through the process. I know that there were good candidates. All of them were good candidates. And I just appreciate the opportunity to be here. I've lived in Prescott for many, many years. And my love for Prescott has pushed me to do many things that I've done on my own time and expense to betterment for the city of Prescott. So, and this is one thing I think that I am qualified, and I'm here to see that, you know, I meet your expectations, to see if I can be, you know, assigned a seat on the council to oversee our city. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hannah. Councilman Montoya?
Thank you, Mayor. Sherri, my question is to you is, the council is in the process of reviewing and potentially adopting the 2025 general plan for voter consideration at the 2025 general election. What is your position on the general plan in its current form and why?
Okay. So the current general plan, as it is written, I am not fully supportive of it, mainly because I feel that there's some things in there that are not pertinent to what the general plan was originally put in form to do. The general plan is where our city is going to follow, even though everybody says it's just a guideline, not a suggestion, you know, as mandatory. But the citizens will be voting on it, and it will be used as a guideline for our city. My concern is there are things in there, the discrimination clause, which I feel is not pertinent to what the document is for. It's a land use document. And I also feel that there are some things in there that are mandatory for our public that could be costly and restraining for, for them to do. So I know our current administration now is looking at federal funding for cities and towns and school districts. If people have been paying attention to the news, Kyleen School District was the latest district down in the valley that had their federal funding pulled because of DEI clauses in there. So for me, I know the city of Prescott is dependent on federal funding, and it's important to the advancement of our city for a number of reasons, for our airport, for roads, and for housing funding and transportation. So I look at this and I say, why would we jeopardize? Why would we jeopardize any federal funding, leaving any DEI in there? And also, why would we jeopardize possibly the public voting it down? So I know we have time to fix some of that, and a better review of that would be that we go back over it and look at some of the things that could be pulled in order to properly pass that with the public.
Sherri, Alan Dershowitz recently said that the problem with universities is they teach you what to think, not how to think. And my criteria for a city council person is, can they evaluate each proposal on its own merits without regard to any partisan perspective? So with that, I'm going to ask you a question. Remember now, I'm not looking at a, at the right answer. I want to know how you think. The council is in the process of considering options for the potential widening of Highway 89. What is your position on the components of this project, and most importantly, why?
Okay. Well, I look at this a little different from everybody else. I look at this as a safety issue. And so being familiar with our police and fire chief that we just work closely with on Proposition 478, I know that Chief Dura is doing an ingress and an egress study right now. And he is very, very intelligent man. He has very newest technology to run the stats, the, the car count, and just take the whole situation into, you know, looking at what would be the best way for us in a state of emergency, what we need to do with the Sun Dog or 89A. So that's what I'm looking at, because he's doing the evaluation. So looking through the lens of a safety lens, where if we have to evacuate or any type of emergency we have, I'm looking for our police chief and our fire chief to guide us, to give us a plan after they finish their evaluation, working with our emergency medical, emergency medical situation and our components, both in the county and the city, because we'd have to work together in case of an emergency. I'm looking to them to tell us, should we have widened the roads? Should, this would give us better access to evacuate in and out of Prescott? And so if they come back and determine that that's the thing we need to do, if the Sun Dog is the correct way to go, or 89A to widen that, then I support that. If they come up with another plan that will accomplish the same thing and possibly go another route, then I'm going to support that.
Thank you.
Sherri, the question of whether or not to tap into the Big Chino has been a significant point of contention in recent years. What is your position on the issue of the Big Chino and why?
Okay. Well, that was always the plan for years. We have a contract in place right now. We're in Prescott Valley and SRP, where Prescott holds the major portion of the water fund for that project. But within the last few years, we've seen some, with new technology and things the way are progressing, we do have an alternative to take wastewater and turn it into potable drinking water. And right now, in, in Arizona, and Nevada, and Utah, they are already proceeding to, to do these things. And down in Phoenix and Tucson, they already have money and they're starting to do this. So I think, other than to, you know, tap into the Big Chino, because obviously the concern is that we don't want to damage the Verde River, which, I grew up on the Verde River, swimming and fishing and camping down there. It's very near and dear to my heart. And plus also, you know, we want to be able to preserve our natural resources as much as we can. But now with the new technology, we can actually take wastewater and turn it into drinking water. And in the South, we already know that Arizona is in a drought, and it is also affecting the Southwest states. So Arizona, California, Nevada, that currently pull water from the Colorado River, they too are now instituting, looking at taking wastewater and turning it into potable water. So that will relieve the pressure on our Colorado River, which will preserve that as best we can. So that would be the way that I would like to go. I know it's something that's going to be, take time to do, and it's going to be costly. But Prescott has to lead on this. And what we need to do is to, to pull our contract out that we have with Prescott Valley and SRP and review that and determine if this is an alternative to go that way and review that contract so that we're not going to be violating anything or causing any issues. But that would be my first suggestion. And let Prescott lead on this and take us into the future.
Thank you, Sherri. My question is, the city is in the midst of its annual budget cycle. Given the most recent budget discussions, what priorities and changes would you be supportive of? What are your concerns related to the budget? And what parts of the five-year capital plan do you support or not support? And why?
Okay, for the budget. Well, actually, I looked at the budget. I was here for, you know, budget hearings, and I thought that a job was, you balance the budget. And what you've done, I felt, was putting the priorities where we need to be was, was, was good. I am of the mind that we need to concentrate, I, I was encouraged by seeing that we've now added an economic development director specifically for that job to help us with economic development. And John Heine, I think, will do a great job. We also need to, our expenditures are going to be up because we are going to be applying our new fire stations. So that's going to be a cost, but we have a way to pay for that now. And I just want to thank all of you who, you all came together and we all worked together to get 478 passed so that we could accomplish that. I would like to see, our roads are a big concern, working with that, but federal funding, we can also apply for that. I just would like to concentrate also on just doing things that would, that are done to keep our city clean and safe. We accomplished that for our police and fire to protect us so the people that come here, they feel secure. Our city is, will be clean and we can, which will help with our tourism, to promote our tourism into this, our city, because that's a big component of our revenue. And it also supports our sales tax. So I would like to see a little more done for our businesses. I think our businesses are the heart and soul of our community. We ask our business owners to put their whole life into having their business here in Prescott. And I'd like to possibly do a survey to see how we, the business owners feel that we could help them and how we could make, do things for them, because it's, it's part of our sales tax revenue. And so it's important that we do things to encourage a positive business growth for here in Prescott also.
Discussions regarding potential improvements at the Prescott rodeo grounds and events has been debated by the public and the council over the last few years. What do you feel is a reasonable solution to these issues? And how do you envision the community moving forward in a united manner related to the rodeo?
Well, the rodeo is such a value to our community and our heritage. There's, with the, with the neighbors, I would like to see a little more cohesiveness with our neighbors that live around there, because even though the rodeo was there first, we all have to live together and work together. And this, the rodeo is going to be entering a new phase now with the city. And we, we just all need to work together to come to common ground on how we can best improve our rodeo, because it is such a important part of our heritage, and it is an economic boost to our community. I mean, we have 19 special events that take place during our, in our city over the year, from January to December. And the top events that bring in the most revenue are the rodeo and our Christmas festivities. So it's something I think that the rodeo is, we just have to work together and come together. It's, it's going to be very important that we continue on with this, and it's going to be situated there. And we have to learn to, to just all get along and, and make it work for all of us. And I know the rodeo's done some improvements with the lighting and the sound to, to bring down the glare and the noise. And there's other things that can be done, but I just think, working in conjunction with the neighbors there, and also the city will be, take a huge role in that, that we can do it. We can do it. And it's, it's vital to our community that we do do it.
My turn, Sherri. The council recently adopted a five-year strategic plan. What parts of this plan are you aligned with and why? And how do you see this plan impacting the city moving forward?
Okay. The strategic plan, actually, I align with every bit of it. I've looked at it. I think we've accomplished the first part with our police and fire. That was a big part of our plan. Infrastructure needs to be looked at. We've seen the ramifications now of older infrastructure with the pressure of our growth on those, on the infrastructure. I like the part about continuing with, to have our outdoor, our natural, preserve our natural resources, because that's a huge part of our quality of life. It also is a big component of our revenue, because ecotourism is, is a lot for this community. And so... And so trying to think what else was in the strategic plan, those things. I actually agreed with everything. I think we're on the right point, moving towards the, what was set out to better our community and tackle the problems that we're facing. So it was a good plan that was laid out for the next five years.
Well, I'll also get to ask the next one. So is there a question that you hoped would be asked, but wasn't? And if so, what would that question be? And how would you respond to it?
Okay. I hoped I was going to be asked how I thought I would make a difference on the council. And so since it wasn't asked, I feel that, you know, in my leadership roles, I've learned that you have to be a good listener. You have to listen to everybody. And because when you're on the city council, you represent everybody. There's times when I don't agree on things and I'll say why and why I feel it's important that I don't agree on that. But I also feel that, you know, it's just important to listen to people, to hear their concerns and where we can agree that we come together and agree on things so we can get things done. I've been someone who's been involved in the community for many years. I've spent my own time, dedication and money to do things that improve the city of Prescott with my Drive Friendly campaign, with the supporting the Shop With The Cop and our Prescott firefighter charities. And just being active, I was on two boards and commissions here with the city and being involved in other groups in the city, I feel that it keeps me up to date, aware of what's going on. And listening to people when they talk to me, like going around and talking to the business owners to see how the city can help them. So I think that would be the question that I felt should have been asked, that how would I contribute? How would I be a benefit to this council and the city?
Good answer. So that concludes our series of questions. So you do have another minute if you want to make a closing statement.
Okay. Well, I just want to thank you again. I know that, you know, growing up here, I know a lot of people. I have a lot of connections and, you know, sometimes I agree with things and sometimes I don't. Like I said, I'm vocal when I don't. So I just want to do what's best for Prescott. And I feel that over the past year, I've been to every council meeting, study session, except one, I was sick, but I did watch it online. And I feel my knowledge of what's currently going on in the city would give me the best position to be seated and not have to be brought up to date. I feel I'm current on all the issues except for anything that was done in executive session because I'm not privy to that. But I could hit the ground running and I feel that, you know, I have, since we all worked together on 478, I feel I have a good rapport with everyone on the council. And I think that's very important because we have tough issues coming up and we all have to work together. And I feel that I have the relationship with each one of you that we can sit down and talk and come to agreement, first of all, what we agree on and then work from there. So I appreciate your time. I've learned so much and I've come to appreciate how hard it is to be in your position because there's a lot of things you have to deal with and it's complicated. But I'm ready to take on the challenge and like I said, I feel I can step in and just hit the ground running because I'm familiar with all the issues.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hannah. We appreciate your interest and as I said, we will be making a decision at the end of this meeting. Thanks. Hello, Mr. Mason. Thanks for coming. We're running a little ahead of schedule of all things. So a couple of our council members have decided to make, take a little bio break.
Well, do you want to just wait?
Yeah, we should wait until they return.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Mason, come on up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mason, we have a series of six questions. Each council member will have a chance to ask one. And you'll, you have one minute for an opening statement. And then we'll go through the questions, maybe with a last follow-up and then a closing statement for one minute.
All right.
So please proceed.
Well, my name is Rex Mason. I live at 301 East Rossir. Lucy and I moved in there about 32 years ago. And when Lucy got involved in politics in 97, city council started paying attention to city policy and city decisions. So I've been watching it for a while. And not that that, I had any direct interaction, but it generally aware of general issues is what I should say. And like I've described to people before, as with most citizens, my knowledge is fairly broad, but it's very shallow. And you don't, you don't know deep unless you're involved right in the middle of it. So I would expect to have to run a fair amount to catch up with everybody else.
Very good. Councilman Montoya?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Mason, the council is in the process of reviewing and potentially adopting the 2025 general plan for voter consideration at the 2025 general election. What is your position on the general plan in its current form and why?
Well, I think there's some surpluses in the general plan and that's just a personal opinion. But, and what my objection, gentle objection, I should say, to that surplusage would be that when you have extra words in a document, it can be a step towards lawsuits. And if, the one, the one thing I remember is the statement about the constitutional protections we already enjoy nationwide and statewide. That is in a statement about civil rights, as I remember. And I think that's just surplus and might give some lawyer somewhere sometime a feeling that they could sue for some reason. So that would be my one comment. I think there's other examples of that too, but generally it's a, and I haven't read it cover to cover. But it's, as I've had it described to me by people who have read it cover to cover. And I have generally would concur with it.
Hey Rex, can you get a little closer to that microphone?
Sure, of course.
We've got people back there trying to hear.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ellen Dershowitz recently said that the problem with universities is that they teach what to think rather than how to think. And my corollary to that is my one criteria for selecting a councilman is are they able to evaluate each proposal on its own merits regardless of any partisan perspective?
Well, thank you for that question. That's where I-
I haven't got to the question yet.
Oh.
That was, that was a preamble to the question.
All right.
So the council is considering a process to potentially widen Highway 89. What is your position on the components of this project? And most importantly, back to my preamble of how you think, why is that important?
Okay. I have two answers. One's fairly short. And let me, let me go through the first answer first. You asked me, or in your preamble, you said something about examining each issue. And that's where I start. I don't have an agenda. So if it's the issue of widening the road, that's a little bit of an unfair, unfair situation because I drive through that twice a day, Monday through Thursday, as I go to school out of Tri-City Prep. Yesterday was my last day of teaching out there. And I've enjoyed that immensely and hope to substitute for them over the years because I like being around the high school students. But I drive through the Dells. Now, and the point being that I would like to see all the research done on that situation right now. But my statement to others who've asked this question, and this is a short answer, it will happen. Widening that road will happen. And it's kind of like when Williamson Valley got widened. We had a significant debate about that. What was that, 20 years ago, maybe? I don't know. I'm remembering. But eventually it will happen because the traffic load on that road is enormous. I just happened to count the cars behind me and in front of me coming through the circle out there by the museum, Fippen Museum. And I think I was seven or eight in a row and there were six or seven behind me. That is a load. That's a traffic load. I also heard, I didn't see the original source on this, that a traffic study shows that 85% of the traffic coming through the Dells is from north of the airport, not from outside the Dells, but from north of the airport. So I would want to verify those pieces of information. And having had the personal experience of driving through that twice a day for the last eight years, I have seen it. And an example, a drastic example that I would hope never happens is we've all seen multi-car pileups, all right? Every one of us. And there's several hundred yards, a couple of places in the Dells where if you had a bobtail over on its side and six or seven other cars, you could be wall-to-wall vehicles and not be able to get to injured folks. And that, that won't last. I mean, it has to change. Now, whether it happens in this term or next year or five years from now or 20 years from now, it, my belief is that it will happen. And again, I would just refer to Williamson Valley, that road getting wide and the bridge getting built and all that that we talked about 15 or 20 years ago.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Rex.
Hi.
My question is, the question of whether or not to tap into the Big Chino has been a significant point of contention in recent years. What is your position on that issue? And again, importantly, why?
Indeed. Thank you. John Olson was one of the water expert ranchers in Yavapai County, the founder of Olson Grain. And he took me for a flying ride down Big Chino Road about 1999. Did anybody ever drive with John? It was interesting. He said it about 47 miles an hour, the ripples level out on the dirt road. But anyway, he took me out to his old ranch, was, which at that time was the TLC, and talked to me about everything, including water. And I've listened, listened to him and I've also listened to a couple of other old timers. Bill Fane, you all remember Bill, in Prescott Valley. And Sam Steiger, I'm sure some of you remember Sam too. And he, of course, was, knew about water and in various capacities, he talked about the flow at the Sullivan Dam versus the seven different weirs, is what he called them, coming around to Camp Verdi. And that the flow increased from a very modest number, I'm sorry, I don't remember what it is, at Sullivan Dam, to, I do remember, 300,000 cubic feet per minute at, was it second? Anyway, I'm not a water expert, but it was a very high flow down at Camp Verdi, which the indication is the obvious one and there are multiple sources of water for the Verdi River. So that's one question that always becomes an issue for people. The other thing is, as some of you know, Representative Mason, who is sitting here to my right, was the chairman of the Water and Energy Committee at the House Representatives for six years, as she finished up her term down there. And we talked, we talked about a lot of things, but it did include water. So all those words are just by way of saying, there's a little bit of background that I have, talking to the old timers who had to deal with it since post-war era, 1950s. And then having some expertise, homegrown expertise in my house, I'm personally persuaded that there's a lot of water out there. A lot. And also somewhere in that time, picked up the notion that when they measured the water, again, back in that post-war era, is my understanding, they sounded it and they only went down to 1,200 feet. They didn't count any water below that. Now, that may have changed in the 15 or 20 years since I heard that conversation. I'm looking to see if there's any recognition to whether that did change. But that would be one of the things I'd want to find out first of all, is if, what does he calculate the depth of that pool of that reservoir below the ground out there? Because if it goes significantly below 1,200 feet, that's, that's something that's very important to know. Now, the, that was the second, second part of your question was about tapping in. My understanding, and again, it's part of that shallow knowledge, not deep knowledge, is that the state has the right to take that source of water back over from the city of Prescott. And I also understand that Prescott Valley has an interest in that water now. I think that would be potentially catastrophic. Okay? They take over that water. Now, I know that it's a very high expense. Okay? I've heard numbers all over the map. But in one extreme, I think one of the conversations, somebody indicated we needed to, we need to do something to get recovery of that water started somehow, to preserve that right. Oh, thank you very much. To preserve that right to that water so that we don't lose it to the state or to SRP. And I would agree with that statement. Now, I don't know whether that means a continuous chain of water trucks pumping one well? Now, I don't know whether that means a continuous chain of water trucks pumping one well, you know, there, there are wells out there and so on, or, or whether it means an actual pipeline. I do understand that the, it's a fair distance from the nearest well or the nearest part of the water ranch back to the Dugan Well and pump station there in Chino. And that would be the first leg of any kind of improvement. That would be a permanent improvement. So I would, again, dig into the information, try to learn more about it, and see if it is at all feasible to start tapping that water so we don't lose that right. That's the sum and substance.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rex. My question for you is, the city is in the midst of its annual budget cycle. Given the most recent budget discussions, what priorities and changes would you be supportive of? What are your concerns related to the budget? And what parts of the five-year capital plan do you support or not support, and why?
Good question. I don't know the budget intimately, but I do, I'm a strong, basic services kind of guy, you know, police fire, streets, water sewer, and trash. That's, in my mind, that's the six basic services. City's supposed to do things we can't do for ourselves. That's general definition. And immediately after those six, I would think that we need to invest in economic development. We've lost some commercial projects for various reasons. Some of the very, some of them very clean. And unless the legislature has changed the law, tax beneficial, you know, hotels. So, but those six basic services have to be tended and have to be addressed. Anything outside of that, I think at this point, the, the amount of discretion goes up and down with time, of course, but anything outside of that, I think is discretionary. And I would look with, for a rational basis on basic services and for stricter sort of scrutiny with anything outside the basic services. So no specific element do I have for you. I think this debate about the rodeo is something that needs to be very carefully tended. And I don't know enough about it to talk about it. So does that answer your question?
Thank you.
Rex, you just touched on the next question.
Oh, okay. Well, you want to skip it?
Nope. I want to dig in. Discussions regarding potential improvements at the Prescott rodeo grounds and events has been debated by the public and the council over the last few years. What do you feel is a reasonable solution to these issues? And how do you envision the community moving forward in a united manner related to the rodeo?
Well, it's a compound question. And let me do the, the last part of it first. There won't be unanimity in the community. I think that's what you asked for the last part of that question. There are going to be, no matter what the solution is, there are going to be people who are vehemently against it, is my guess. I can understand why the neighbors might not like it, but it's been there since, I understand, the 1930s, kind of like the airport. It's been there since 1928. And, and so I think that there is a first in time, first in right sort of approach to that question and, and so on. I think it would be, although I'm not a, we go to, we go to usually to one rodeo a year, I'm not what you would call an enthusiast, although I enjoy it very much. It is Prescott. In my mind, it symbolizes what, what makes our city different. I mean, we're at the end of the road. We don't have a through, through interstate highway. And so a lot of people come to that rodeo to see Prescott and enjoy it thoroughly. And I think the citizens, the majority of citizens do. And I think probably the majority of people who have been here a relatively short period of time certainly try it on for size also. I know that one time I bet on the horses and won a couple hundred dollars, and Lucy knew exactly where to put that, $200. So it's, it's an entertainment form and, and socializing form, and it's a cultural form. And I think even with the old roof, over the, over the old concrete benches with the old pipes in them, I think that is perfect. That's just me. And I, I, about the expanded part of the potential subdivision, I don't think 15 million or 15.3 million, or whatever that number is, would do much more than just sort of clean it up, spruce it up, and maybe build one or two buildings, ancillary buildings that have been talked about ad infinitum. I'm not sure redevelopment of a whole section of town is appropriate, number one. We don't, I'm not sure we need that. There may be a better parking answer that could be worked on so that it's easy in and easy out. But of course, we have two ways in and out from the east, and we have two ways going north and south on the west boundary. So it's, it's something I would hate to see go away. Now, did you ask about anything else, another development?
I asked if you feel there's a reasonable solution to these issues, and how do you envision the community moving forward in a united manner?
I don't see united manner because I know there will always be somebody who's against whatever is decided. But in terms of moving forward, I think you have to take whatever money the state has offered to provide, not lose that money, and perhaps leverage that money a little bit. Perhaps there could be, I'm pretty sure there's a lot of folks in town who feel sort of like I do about this thing, that it's an important part of what defines Prescott. And maybe we could double it up. I don't know. Probably, I heard conversation about an arena. Generally, that's reasonably, I want to start to say expensive, reasonably cost-effective. Nothing's inexpensive. But reasonably cost-effective structure if the 15 million is not consumed in terms of utilities and men's and women's facilities and food service facilities and everything else that could be part of that improvement. There are a couple of charming old buildings out there, the old rock buildings especially are, are old Prescott. So, but the short answer is I'm in complete support of retaining the rodeo, enhancing it if possible.
Thank you, Rex. The council recently adopted a five-year strategic plan. What parts of that plan are you aligned with and why? And how do you see this plan impacting the city moving forward?
Well, I would need to research that in some detail to answer that in detail. In general, I think that we have taken care of, in my opinion, we've taken care of the, I'm trying to think of the, the right word, the non-basic services needs for this community for quite a bit of time. But if you throw economic development into my basic services, then of course the rodeo would be part of that. I think maybe policy shift so that there could be, make it easier, a little easier on the folks that want to commit their money and time and risk to the city of Prescott. And I was pleased to hear that the hotel up on the old Sears building up nearby, up on Gateway Mall at the east end, is potentially coming back or potentially with us still. I think there needs to be some, my opinion, some deeper consideration of the hotel on Whiskey Row and so on. I was saddened to understand that we lost a hotel out on Old Black Canyon Highway, and perhaps unfairly for considerations about the challenges of working with the government here. And I'm hoping that the, the one where the old city courthouse, city hall used to be, is, is moving forward. But in construction, in development, any, any delay can be death, even if the city has a financial interest in making that property successful. So, and that's just through 30-plus years of observing development, observing construction projects as an architect. Did I address your question?
No, I think you did.
Okay.
Now, we come to the very last opportunity for a follow-up question here. Is, is there a question that you hope to have been asked but weren't?
Oh.
And if so, how would you answer that question?
I, one thing I, like I said, one thing I bring is a, is a clean slate. I think over the last 12, 15 years, we've seen a lot of agenda-driven decisions. And as with national politics and national parties, we've seen some division in the, in the, in the community about those issues. I'm absolutely convinced that the way things were before this division started are achievable, the friendliness and the good nature of Prescottonians towards the fact that they're Prescottonians. Not quite sure why the animosity has developed, but I would hope that you all have some ideas about that. Again, I'm a shallow knowledge guy, not a deep knowledge guy. But I'd sure like to see the bickering and the backstabbing and the negative commentary from, there's not two sides. It seems to be multiple sides on any given issue. I'd like to see that, see a way to get over that. I'm not sure what you do. I'm not sure what you do about that. So that would, you basically asked me, what is my biggest concern about Prescott? And I think the interrelationships of the community, and I, and again, I don't know why, when I was involved in politicking, running, running behind somebody who's running for campaign, our opponents and I, we, we were nice to each other. Nobody put up a sign to block another person's sign. We had a few idiots that would steal signs, okay? And we had one idiot that burned a sign, billboard, a wooden billboard, you know, lit it on fire. I'm not sure if he got prosecuted or not, but he, oh, it was an issue. It wasn't the person. It was, he was the Gateway Mall before it got built. Some guy burned the billboard that said Gateway Mall coming or something like that. And that was an extreme. And I hope the power of suggestion doesn't go beyond me. But that would be the biggest issue I see, is, is a negativity that I see in the community that probably exists in every community in the United States. But it seems to be worse than it was, again, 25 years ago.
Well, thanks, Rex. You do have one more minute to make a closing statement.
Oh, okay. Well, I would yield my time to any more questions, if there are some. And I don't see any bright-eyed hands going up. The main thing I think I can offer the council is that I'm not an accountant, but I can read budgets. And I do like to get into the fundamentals of whatever organization I'm involved with. And so I would be, I would be, assuming I have a desk somewhere, if you choose me, I would be down here at the desk reading and, and so on. But I'm an open book. I have, short story, since I have another 30 seconds. The Symphony Orchestra in Houston went on strike in 92, I think. And the cello section had T-shirts printed up that said, "Nothing to prove, nothing to lose," when they were going on strike. Well, that's kind of the life I've led, I hope. And I'm, I'll answer any question anybody has anytime about anything. And I am not an agenda-driven person at all. I will read and I will act based upon consultation with, with whoever's involved and the experts in the community and everything else. But I don't have any particular agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mason. We appreciate your interest, and we'll, you'll probably know within the next hour or two what our decision is. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
At this point, I think I'll entertain that public comment. So if anybody has filled out a, a blue card and wants to comment about any of the candidates, we'll take up to five comments per candidate.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm Stephen Cook. I'm here in support of Patrick Grady. I've known Patrick since he and Leslie moved here about eight years ago. I've increasingly been impressed by how he operates at public meetings, as part of several volunteer organizations, and in church social settings. I've especially been impressed with how he, how he gets along with people. I think in today's polarized times, you know, with culture war stuff, ideologically-driven agendas and all that, Patrick will be there in the middle, looking to for the common ground for the win-win solutions, if they're possible. He'll be a voice of reconciliation. And I personally feel that he's just a source of wise counsel that I've benefited from increasingly over the years. And I think that you all have a good chance to make somebody really special part of the council. Anyway, thank you.
Deb Thalassidis.
Just as a reminder, public comments are limited to three minutes.
I know I'm going to break this thing. So you guys have a challenge. You picked three good candidates, so thank you for that. Just sitting back there observing, it looks like two of the candidates, when you asked the question, what is your position, they staked out their position. One of the candidates, when you asked, talked about how they would formulate their position. So I'm not advocating for any one of the candidates. What I'm telling you, it looks like from the peanut gallery, is you have a choice to make between a candidate who has already told you what their position is going to be, or a candidate who says, these are, this is the information I would gather, this is how I would go about making my decision. Particularly to you, Mr. Gambogi, talking about how people think, I really think that's a challenge in front of you today. Not what they think, but how they're going to go about doing this job. And only you guys know how hard that is. Thank you.
Lucy Mason.
Thank you, council, for the opportunity to speak on behalf of my husband here. I, I saw him as being, as quite nervous and speaking, and speaking quite a bit about things that he feels with his heart. And I want to say that is, is probably the most important thing that we can have on council, is your heart serving the public. And that is who my husband is. He has always done that with all his experience. And as an architect for 30 years, building hospitals, dealing with people who are seriously ill, and doctors and administrations from across the country for about 25 years. These are the kinds of skills that he can bring to council, along with his ability to speak clearly about things that he knows, about things that he has studied. And I can tell you that he is a studier. He reads constantly and studies these things. Now, he came in very cold today on purpose because he's not about coming in and, and just speaking about what he knows already because he knows- speaking about what he knows already, because he knows that what you know and what you have studied for years is where he has to go. He knows that he's not the expert in what you know about all these issues that you asked. They were very specific issues. And it takes a lot of study and a lot of listening to the public and working very hard. And he has not had the ability to do that. As these council members really, as our candidates really have not had the chance. You've had a couple of candidates that have worked within different opportunities. And I respect each one of these candidates for all their experience, including my husband and all the things that he can bring, Rex Mason can bring, to this council. And I will just sum it up from there and just say thank you so much for the opportunity to speak on his behalf. Thank you.
He may have been nervous, but now his face is red.
That's all.
All right. We are now going to deliberate and we are going to, I'm going to entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Mayor, I move to go into executive session.
Second.
The reason we're doing this is it's come to our attention that there is some legal components to our decision here that we're going to have to discuss in executive session. So we will adjourn for, hopefully, a brief period of time to review those legal concerns and then come back to take our vote on the appointment. So this current meeting is...
Just need a vote, Mayor.
Yeah. We're now going to take a vote on the executive session. Please vote. So we are going to adjourn this, are we adjourning or just postponing?
We're not adjourning, just moving into executive session.
Yeah, we're moving into executive session, then we'll come back after we're finished discussing the legal issues involved, and then we will move on to our vote for appointment.
Okay, we are reconvening our public voting meeting. And I have to announce that two members of this council are going to have to recuse themselves from this vote. Both Lois Furrworth and I are elected members of the Republican Party, and we have taken an oath of office not to vote for any candidate who's not a registered Republican. So therefore, we cannot participate in the process in which we are biased in our vote. So Lois and I will recuse ourselves from this vote, and I will turn the remaining part of the process over to Mayor Protem Cantelman to complete this. Lois and I will absent ourselves from the meeting, and after the process has been completed by the remaining members of council, then I will come back to swear in the member who's been elected.
Okay, we're going to proceed with the process. So council members, I will entertain more discussion if you have it, or a motion. Ted?
I just wanted to say that all three candidates, it's obvious that you love the city, and you're all capable. So this is a tough decision on our part, but that's why we get paid the big bucks.
And if you're wondering, it's seven cents an hour. Last time I checked my billable hours. Anyway, okay, hearing, no discussion, I'll take a motion.
Mayor Protem, I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I move that we appoint Patrick Grady to the council seat. Second.
Okay, everybody vote. Okay, congratulations, Patrick, on that. And if you'll just give us a minute, we're going to send somebody out to get the mayor and Lois, and we're going to go ahead and perform the oath of office right away.
Thank you, sir. It's a pleasure coming with you.
Please repeat after me. I, Mr. Protem, solemnly swear, solemnly swear that I will support and defend, and I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona, the Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona, that I will bear true faith and allegiance, that I will bear true faith and allegiance, do the same, and defend them against all, and defend them against all enemies, born and domestic, and I will faithfully and impartially, and I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of council member, discharge the duties of council member, according to the best of my ability, according to the best of my ability, so I do affirm this, so I do... Congratulations.
I want to first thank the city council for providing me this opportunity, this amazing honor. I've been in public service, as many of you know, for 30 years, working for different local governments. It feels like this is the pinnacle of that career, and to be able to work with this city council on the priorities they've established, it's going to be wonderful to be a part of that. And I want to thank my campaign chairperson for all of her support, and for those of you that came today to be with me, that was very heartwarming, and I hope, as the swearing-in ceremony affirms, that I can contribute to the city council, and I will dedicate the next two and a half years of doing so. Thank you so much.
Well, again, thank you all for coming, and this was rather an unusual appointment process, especially when we were made aware of the conflicts that myself and Councilwoman Furrworth had. But I think we will be able to move forward with a capable and good council that will be focused on the best interests of the city. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Get ready to get to work.